Well, let me welcome you to the March 22 meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're so glad to have all of you with us, a lot of you educators. We're going to recognize many of you tonight, but also we're glad to have those that are watching from home. Now, at this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we have Alex Georgiev, a sixth grade student at Overall Creek, and Amara McMullin, a third grade student at Bradley, to lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. All right, board members, you have seen a copy of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, seconded by Ms. Barton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications, Ms. Trail.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have quite a few communications tonight. First of all, we want to once again thank one of our partners, Atmos Energy, for their $1,500 donation to purchase books for Bob, our book bus. So we appreciate that. Also, the United Way Service Day at Bradley Academy was a huge success. The Touchstone Energy Community Service Project, along with Middle Tennessee Electric, provided new lighting throughout the building, as well as mulch and paint to spruce up the campus. So we appreciate all of the work that went on during that day. And Mr. Rocha is back. It was a great day, a lot of people on the campus. Steam in the City was a huge success. Thank you for the ones of you who came out and were judges for us and walked around and saw our children in action. They were amazing. We had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of students, staff, their parents, and community members. So for the first time, I think it was an absolute success, and we appreciate that steering committee that put it all together. Also, over 200 family buckets were donated to Healing Hands International to help Ukrainian refugees. We want to say thank you to Mr. Don Bartsch and Overall Creek for spearheading that effort. We had five of our schools and our central office participate. And also, we want to say thank you to City Tile for providing us a box trucks. So, and for Mr. Bartsch and his ability to drive that said truck in Nashville. So MCS student art, as you walked in, you would have seen, you probably did get a chance to see it. It's on display at the City Hall Rotunda through April 29th. We will be having a reception for those students at the end of April. It's also at the Fris, so if you have an opportunity to go to the Fris now through April the 12th, we would love for you to get out and see the artwork on display there. There's also going to be an art show in May, from May 10th through 21st, at MTSU's Todd Art Gallery. Additionally, I think there is artwork at the Bradley Museum. I think those are fifth grade students at Hobgood on display there. So lots of great work by our art teachers and their students. MTSU's Men and Women's Tennis will host over 100 students for a tennis clinic tomorrow, if the weather permits. This is an event that happens in the fall and spring each year, and we've done it with them probably about nine years now. So that is just amazing. Our kids enjoy it, and I think the student athletes enjoy it as well. And the City Schools Foundation Excellence in Education is scheduled for Saturday, April 9th, at Copper Ridge Event Venue. It is not too late to get your tickets, so we hope to see you all there. It should be a casual evening and a fun evening for everyone. And then one last announcement, the Gifted Academy graduation was rescheduled because of severe weather that was going to happen the day it was scheduled in March. So it will now happen Saturday, April 23rd. Those are my announcements, but I do want to turn it over to Dr. Duke because we have one other special announcement.
Thank you. I get to do the really fun one. And so I am really pleased to announce that we have really just an amazing accomplishment for one of our teachers. So I'm going to ask Ms. Erin Nunley to please stand up for us and come to the middle. Ms. Nunley, she made me promise I wouldn't make her talk, and so I'm going to honor that commitment I made to her, but I do want to recognize her. Ms. Nunley is a sixth grade teacher at Overall Creek, and we have been notified that she was chosen as one of three state finalists for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Science Teaching.
Wow.
She will now go on to compete for the national level. The Presidential Awards for Excellence in Math and Science were the highest honors bestowed by the United States government for K-12 science, technology, engineering, math, and computer science teaching. The award was established in 1983, and the president may recognize up to 108 exemplary teachers each year. The award recognizes those teachers that have both a deep content knowledge of the subject they teach and the ability to motivate and enable students to be successful in those areas. And as someone who has been in Ms. Nunley's classroom, let me tell you, she exemplifies that. So Ms. Nunley, we want to congratulate you on making it this far in the process. We wish you the best moving forward. She did want me to specifically say her gratitude to Leah Bartsch, Cindy Klisch, Cherry Ross, and Heather Knox, all who have worked with her to mentor her through this process. So congratulations again, Ms. Nunley. We're very proud of you. And Mr. Chairman, those are all the communications for tonight.
All right. Recognitions of Teachers of the Year and Principal of the Year and Supervisor.
Yes, sir. We have lots of recognitions tonight. And Mr. Chairman and Board, we are so excited to recognize this year's Teachers of the Year recipients. Being recognized as Teacher of the Year is special for many reasons, but perhaps most importantly, I think it's so critical because it's a recognition that's given from one's colleagues and school staff. By being selected as Teacher of the Year, these individuals have shown that their fellow teachers recognize their hard work, they see their dedication to their craft, and they know the passion they bring to their job every day. It is always great to be told you're doing a job well done, but that honor is even more special when it's told to you by the people who walk the halls with you each day. So we will be celebrating our Teachers of the Year officially in April at our employee celebration event, but we did not want to let this moment pass without publicly recognizing their hard work. So I'm going to call the names of the Teachers of the Year and the school they represent. Those of you that can be with us tonight, as I call your name, if you wouldn't mind coming toward the middle behind the podium, that will keep the camera crew from having to span the entire audience. I'd appreciate that. So with that, I'd like to recognize from Black Fox Elementary, Kim Inglis and Kristy Lewis. From Bradley Academy, Makari Harrison and the late Donna Beers. From Kason Lane, Amy Walker and Kristy Timberlake. From Discovery, Kelly Holman and Melissa Karns, who I don't think were able to be with us tonight, but we want to congratulate them. From Erma Segal, Devonte Kelly, and Jennifer George. From Hobgood, Nicole Bell and Olivia Calvo. From John Pittard, Francina Jackson and Stephanie Stevens. From Mitchell Nielsen, Amy Adcock, Ashley Walker, and Clinton Staggs. From Northfield, Rachel Davenport and Sherrell Ford Jackson. From Overall Creek, Anna McDonald and Amanda Turmbo. From Reeves Rogers, Malia Rankins and Brittany Davidson. From Salem, Kimberly Cale and Lance Piercy. And from Scales, Jessica Sorth and Kayla Embry. So again, we want to formally recognize these educators and tell them thank you for their work. And if I can have Ms. Inglis and Mr. Piercy, please come toward the front. I think Ms. Inglis is already there. I do want to recognize Mr. Piercy from Salem and Ms. Inglis from Black Fox. They have won the honor of being our District Teachers of the Year, so they will represent our whole district at the Mid Cumberland level. So we want to say a special congratulations to both of you as well. And finally, in addition to our Teacher Year, I'm going to ask Ms. Tiffany Strievel to come up. Ms. Strievel was nominated and selected as our District Principal of the Year, and so she will be. She will, and again, a great honor voted on by her fellow principals for that, and we're so proud of you, Ms. Strievel. And finally, Ms. Sherry Arnett as our District Supervisor. So again, Mr. Chairman, we present these to you and will say congratulations on a job well done to each of them.
Thank you to all of you, each one of you individually and each one of you as a group. A job well done that is always done in Murfreesboro City Schools, but we are extremely proud of you. It's not been an easy year, as we all know, and for you to be at this level, it's something that you have accomplished, and particularly when it's voted on by your peers.
Yes.
So thank you for your efforts and your work, and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Spotlight on Education, Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. One of our commitments in Murfreesboro City Schools is to continue to ensure all of our students have the tools and skills needed so they can be successfully reading on grade level by third grade. We know that this is work, that the work toward reading success does not start in third grade, but it starts in pre-K and kindergarten. And Murfreesboro City is committed to helping ensure every child reaches this milestone. So we've dedicated time, resources, to make sure teachers have the most up-to-date training to achieve this goal for our students. I'm proud to announce that our commitment to this process has led to Murfreesboro City Schools being selected by the State Department of Education as an official Read 360 district. This designation demonstrates our overall focus and determination to achieve the goal of every student reading on grade level. A major part of this work has included some very in-depth literacy training that we've been doing for the past year. So for tonight's Spotlight on Education, I've asked Ms. Kathy Darti, our Early Literacy Coordinator, to come and update the Board on the trainings we have completed and more that we have coming.
Good evening. It's nice to be here. I'm excited to be able to tell you some of the work that we've been doing in Murfreesboro City Schools with what the state has indicated is research behind the science of reading and really how to approach reading in a way that approaches this child with a sounds-first approach. And so what we're going to talk about really briefly is the approach that we're training for teachers. This was from the state. The state recognized that we needed to approach reading in a different way so that we could raise the proficiency rates for our students and schools. So they found the research that indicates that when we approach reading in those primary grades, addressing the sounds of language first, and then connecting it to the phonics, the foundation skills, then we know that we're addressing the reading brain the way we should, which will support student acquisition of reading. So that's one of the things that we've been doing in our district, is really focusing in on this research and the work of the state. So it's really exciting to see. So as you notice, that we've had several trainings. We had two trainings this summer where we trained one group in May, another group, it was a week-long training, another group in June. We also felt that because the teachers were talking about this training and wanted this training, we offered another training in the fall. And in the fall, teachers came on Saturdays. So not only did they give up their days in the summer, but they also decided they were going to give up their days in the fall as well. So again, says a lot about the teachers of Murfreesboro City Schools. Teachers were given a stipend during the summer and the fall to attend this training. It was that important to the state that our teachers received this training. They also received materials that would support the work of this training as well. But we also recognized that some teachers have commitments at home, and they can't do summer trainings, and they can't do Saturday trainings. So we really tried to be responsive to teachers' needs who wanted this training. And so we've offered two more trainings, one at a school level, one at the district level during the school day, and we were able to pay for their subs so that they could attend this training as well. We also have two more trainings this summer that teachers who have not had an opportunity to attend can attend in two different sessions this summer. So we've really tried to give them every opportunity to have this training because our goal is that every teacher in Murfreesboro City Schools in K-2 will receive this sounds-first research-based training. So as you can see, the numbers, in the summer, we had 92 teachers that attended the training. In the fall, we had 40 teachers plus an MTSU professor who attended the training. And then the winter, currently, we have about 42 teachers and two admins that are attending this training as well. Out of the 223 pre-K second grade teachers, 81.6% currently have attended this training. So it's really exciting to see the things that are taking place. This is a part of our strategic plan, is that every teacher pre-K2 will receive this training. And even more exciting is that we have third grade teachers that are wanting this training as well. So we're going to be able to offer that to them this summer as well. So that's the training that's taking place. This is a requirement by the state by the year 2023. Every teacher in K-5 will need to take one of these courses. And so I'm really excited that Murfreesboro City Schools is able to offer this to our teachers in-house. So with that, I wanted to kind of give you some responses that teachers have said about this training. A lot of teachers have said, I've never seen my kindergarten students writing as well as they have because they can hear the sounds of this language, and they're connecting it to the phonics that we are providing the instruction. Again, I want to say thank you again, Board, for giving us a curriculum that addresses the needs of our students, and the sounds-first training aligns so well to the curriculum that you have provided for us. I wanted to give you an opportunity to meet Kim Taylor. Kim Taylor is a teacher who's gone through this training. She went through it this past summer, and she's a kindergarten teacher in our district. So I wanted you to have a chance to listen to her experience as well.
Good evening. I'm much more comfortable with five-year-olds than I am with adults. Forgive me if I'm nervous, but I did, just like she said, have the opportunity to go over this summer, and I went to the second session, which just happened to be a smaller group, and I loved. We were able to really dissect the information we were given. The most incredible thing that I thought took place was the research behind what we were learning. That was the buy-in, right? We want our kids to buy into what we teach them. So knowing this research was a true buy-in for me, and I was able to take it back to our team. I had another teammate at Erma Segal that went, and we were able to present it to our teachers, and they loved it in kindergarten. It was an easy buy-in for them, too, once we shared that research. I started it immediately. The kids love it. It's just a sound, but it's fast-paced, and we have movements that can go with it, which of course all kids love movements. So they have a blast with it, and if I forget, they are quickly to say, hey, aren't we going to do that phonemic awareness thing? So they keep me on track with that. But in seven to 10 minutes, we are able to cover rhyming, syllables, adding and deleting phonemes, alliteration, and it's just so much compounded into one little thing, but they're learning so much. Each week builds on the skills. So the foundation is incredible for them to continue to build on. Not only was sounds-first important, I loved the information about bringing decodables to the kids. I've always done leveled readers, but the decodables for them to hold it, for them to be able to read it, to be able to understand what they're reading, because we had already taught that skill, was huge. And like Ms. Kathy said, teaching them to do sounds one at a time has been huge, and that's been a little shift. You know, we were always kind of taught, look at the picture, it'll kind of guide you. What do you see in the word? What's at the end of the sentence, at the beginning of the sentence? But allowing them to tackle it head-on, I think is going to prove to be very successful, not only now, but later on, because that foundation is there, plus they are able to write beautifully. Well, I say beautifully, you know, kindergarten. So it's just been wonderful. And I'll just leave you with one success story. There's been many, many, but I have one that came to me, a little girl, and she just didn't have a lot of exposure. She didn't know letters. I don't even think she understood that there were letters in the world. Really could sing the alphabet a little bit, but it wasn't all correct. So we had a long way to go. But last week, I was able to sit down and record her in a small group, take the third decodable that we have had, and she read it with confidence and with a breeze. And then she, not only when she got to a word, she didn't look at me, she knew that she could sound that word out because she already had the skills to do it. So she was able to point to those, read it, and then look up at me in the middle of it and go, why would somebody name their animals Chip and Josh? So not only does she know what it's, I mean, she understood it. She was able to communicate that with me. And then at the end, she looked and said, I read that. Yes, baby, you did. Huge, great program. Thank you for allowing us. Thank you for teaching us. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We have questions, but Ms. Barton?
I don't have a question, but I have to say this. For those of us that have been around a while, oh my gosh. We're finally back to teaching the way children learn to read. Isn't that amazing that the state just now discovered this?
That's true.
Sorry, but I mean, we've been fighting for that a long time. So so thrilled to hear about this. I've heard all good things about it.
I guess that goes back to the old saying, what goes around comes around. It finally came back around.
You only have to wait about 35 years.
Progress is not always immediate.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms.?
I did have a question. I know I saw 2023 as, oh goodness, my screen went blank. Oh, it was on her screen that you had. That's why I can't find it. 2023, is that our, help me with this, is that the date that we want everybody K through 2 to have this training and implement?
For a teacher to renew her license in the state of Tennessee, by August of '23, they will need to have taken one of these courses, whether it was in person or online. Our goal is to ensure that every teacher pre-K2 receives it by 2023. And I do believe that we're at 81.6% right now. I do believe we should be able to hit that mark fairly easily.
And I ask that question because I'm interested to know what our numbers are going to look like after complete implementation. I'm excited.
We talk a lot about short-term and long-term goals, right? And so when I think about how do we immediately think about the improving the reading achievement of our students, that really falls heavily on our testing grades, our third through six. And I think what Ms. Darti is leading with the early literacy, when I think of the work Ms. Taylor's doing, that's that long-range plan, right? That means when they come to us in third grade, they have those skills ready to go. So it's an easier lift for every teacher, and we can go further and further.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
I do have one more question. I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead. I'll have one after that.
Are y'all using this as well to help? I worry so much about these, I hate to say COVID children, but COVID children, the ones that started kindergarten the year this all started and the time that they've lost. So is it being used with some of the, like, maybe third grade as well?
Well, you know, that's interesting. I'm glad you asked that question. I do believe that a lot of our third grade teachers are really interested in it because they see the need for it in the classroom. And again, I will always say kudos to our Murfreesboro City teachers that they recognize that our kids are needing this, and so we will make sure that every teacher in third grade that needs it, wants it, will receive it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Thank you. I have questions.
Question, Ms. Goff?
Oh, I was just going to ask, is this program similar to the one that the county used to do that they might still do at the 98%?
You might be referring to, there's a 95% program, and it is a program in essence, like a program versus this is professional development to build the teacher rather than relying solely on this program. I, as a teacher, know really the science and why I'm teaching what I'm teaching. So it's really about professional development, building our teacher's capacity.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore?
I've had some parents contact me over the years, interested in dyslexia and dyslexia screening, and I know one of the things that they stress was how important teaching, reading by a phonics approach is to helping catch kids, because sight words, you know, you can kind of mask a little longer. And I wonder if that's something, it may be too soon to tell, but if you can tell if that's going to help us maybe catch some kids earlier.
I know that the statistics say that a child who, and the sounds-first is based on phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, it's the foundation of phonics instruction. But what they're saying is, a child who shows success with phonemic awareness in kindergarten, you will see a strong correlation to reading success in the ninth grade. So we know that the impact of phonological phonemic awareness is long-term. So if we can get a child to understand the sounds of our language and they connect it to the phonics, the foundation skills that we're teaching, it has long-term success. So yeah, that's what we're hoping for.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Thank both of you. Wonderful report. Dr. Duke, Best of MCS Recognition, I think.
Yes, thank you. This is one of my favorite things to do at every board meeting, and so I know we've had a lot of celebrations tonight, and so we're going to end with one more before we move into our action items. So I am pleased to honor two very special employees for our Best of MCS Recognition tonight. Both of these individuals were nominated for going above and beyond the call of duty and showing character traits and a work ethic that makes all of our MCS employees stand out across the state. So our first Best of MCS Recognition tonight goes to Mr. Ryan Stewart, music teacher at Scales Elementary. Mr. Stewart has been with MCS for 10 years and has worked to build a phenomenal music program. His principal, Ms. Johnson, nominated him for this award. Ms. Johnson explained that this year, Mr. Stewart has stepped up and taken on an additional role of leading their RTI behavior team. Scales has two new school counselors this year, and their experience with that program was limited at first. The program is incredibly important to the overall success of the school and often takes a lot of additional time and effort. Mr. Stewart worked and met with the committee over the summer. He's been training the new school counselors on the program. He has completed all the requirements for the RTI Squared B Manual. He analyzes the school data for Scales weekly and monthly. Mr. Stewart completes many of the tasks after these after-school hours are over. His hard work has definitely paid off with Scales being labeled a gold-level model of demonstration school this year. Mr. Stewart, we want to thank you for going the extra mile and for always representing the best of MCS. So please join. And that's Liam. I met Liam earlier. We're so glad Liam's here.
Hi, Liam.
We're actually going to do two tonight, and I had two nominees I wanted to honor both. Our second recognition tonight goes to Mr. Zachary Truel from Black, I'm sorry, from Black Fox Elementary School. This is Mr. Truel's first year at MCS and his first year in the classroom. During this first year, he's already off to a great start in making MCS a better district. He was nominated by a parent of one of his students. This parent wanted to thank him for the difference he is making in her child's year. The parent stated her child often has a hard time warming up to most people, but he has taken the extra time to make sure her student has all the extra help that she needs. The mother said her child cannot stop talking about Mr. Truel, and she wanted to thank him for being an incredible teacher and for the difference he is making for her child. So we want to thank you for representing the best of MCS. The mother said her child cannot stop talking about Mr. Trul, and she wanted to thank him for being an incredible teacher and for the difference he is making for her child. So we want to thank you for representing the best of MCS.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Settles?
This is not connected to that, but I have a request. This... Can they bring this little baby? This is the most excited member of a school board meeting we have ever had. I'd like this little baby to come every month. That would be great.
That youngster recognized daddy right off the bat.
Right off the bat.
Daddy, mommy, daddy.
I love it. Congratulations.
All right. Consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items as listed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, action item.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ballard?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make a comment in that consent. We approved the school fees, and that's for the field trips and students do things outside the school. And I'm so excited to see that starting to happen again. During COVID, we locked that down, and we weren't able to go. Now I see every month, I'm watching it, and it's growing, and we're getting out more. And what kid doesn't enjoy a field trip, you know, and getting out? So anyway, I just want to hats off to the teachers for getting that going again and happy to see that going.
Absolutely. I think our teachers are just as excited as our students are to get those field trips up and going as well.
All right. Action item, Board Policy 5.700.
Yes, sir. Board Policy 5.700 governs interim teachers, and we are recommending the deletion of the phrase for the remainder of the school year from this policy. Because it is not always necessary for us to hire interims until the end of a specific year, this is the only change to the policy, and we are recommending approval as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson, we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any question or comment? All in favor of approving Policy 5.700, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next policy.
Policy... I'm sorry. Policy 6.200 is our next policy, and it governs student attendance. We are recommending the removal of the phrase "school-sponsored activity" from the list of excused absences. State Board of Education has clarified that students participating in school-sponsored events shall be counted as present, provided they are school-directed, related to instruction, and have prior approval from the board. So we are recommending approval as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposition? And it passes unanimously. 6.309.
Policy 6.309 governs zero tolerance offenses, and we are recommending that we remove the option to remand a student to an alternative school as an option for students who have committed a zero tolerance offense. And that is because we do not operate an alternative school here in Murfreesboro City, and we are recommending approval of the policy as presented.
We have a motion to approve Policy 6.309, zero tolerance.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Approval of the five-year strategic plan.
Over the past six months, the leadership team in Murfreesboro City has worked with the board to update the Murfreesboro City Schools' five-year strategic plan. There was a copy posted in the agenda. We've actually left a copy at your desk as well tonight, the public-facing document. The development of this plan included input from stakeholders of educators, parents, and community members. As you, as the board members are aware, we did present a draft to the board during the January 11th workshop. And as we have in the board packet, we have outlined additions that we have made to the strategic plan based on feedback from board members, from parents, from community members, and the Teacher Advisory Council, which is who we went to after we presented to the board. The plan is divided into four major areas that focus on whole-child support, infrastructure, highly effective educators, and employees and academic success. In total, there are 39 performance objectives we will be focused on achieving and allocating resources towards over the next five years. The board will review the plan annually for needed adjustments, and MCS staff will regularly monitor progress on the performance objectives. And we are recommending approval of the proposed five-year strategic plan.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the five-year plan?
Mr. Chairman, I enthusiastically move that we adopt this plan.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Now, we have any question or comment?
I have some comments.
Yes, ma'am?
I have to make. I just want to thank everybody who was involved in this for all the work of developing this plan. I'm really proud of it. I'm excited about it. I know a strategic plan is not the sort of thing that is like razzle-dazzle, and people get really fired up about. But it's really important, I think, for us to do a good job as a board, to have this in place. You know, two of our jobs are to pass a budget and to evaluate your job, Dr. Duke. And so having this as a guide for us, so that we're all clear about where we're going, you know what's expected of you, you know, these are reasonable goals that we have, but they still push us to be better, and we have ways to measure them. And I'm just, I'm so proud of it. And I'm glad that we have this. I'm glad it's not going to just sit on a shelf and that we revisit it and help us make better decisions for funding and other things. It's just, it's good to have this in place.
Thank you. Any other comment?
It's pretty, too.
All in favor of the motion to approve the five-year plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of budget amendment transfers.
Yes, sir. We have several budget amendments tonight to present. The first one is the approval of the GPS budget transfer for the attendance clerk computer. This amendment transfers a total of $2,000 to cover an increase in the attendance line item from other savings, other material and supplies line item. The increase will cover the cost of a replacement computer and monitors for the attendance clerk at Reeves Rogers. All increases are covered by savings and other categories. There are no new revenues and no change to fund balance, and we are recommending approval of the budget transfer amendment.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We have a second. Thank you, Ms. Settles. Any question or comment? Do we have any other places, Dr. Duke, that we need to make these changes, updates?
Regarding technology?
Well, yes, that and replacement computer monitors.
So we're going, as we go through the budget process now, we're evaluating that to make sure, as we go into next year, we fully have planned out for any replacements in technology. This was a sudden technology issue we had to take care of in attendance. And because it's an attendance secretary, that comes from our attendance budget versus the school budget.
Right. Okay. Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the budget transfer for attendance clerk? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Next item, DLC budget.
Yes, sir. Murfreesboro City was awarded the ELC grant because of our willingness to fully offer on-demand COVID testing to faculty during the school year. And these grants must be expended by June 30, 2022. This amendment transfers a total of $62,000 to extend the nursing software contract for another year, purchase equipment for each school to be able to measure the student height, weight, and BMI of our students, which is a requirement from the state, and to increase the hazard pay bonus from $2,000 to $4,000 per school nurse due to the unexpected increase in COVID testing that was required this year. All increases are covered in savings from other categories. There are no new revenues and no change to fund balance.
All right. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Approval of this.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any question?
Just a comment. I'm so happy that we're going to be able to do at least something for our nurses because what they've done, not only this year, but in years before, we've never really been able to repay them for. They worked a lot of hours outside of their regular work hours. They did not receive compensation for. And I'm so excited. I wish it could be more.
I will say, when we originally set the budget for the $2,000 hard to staff, we talked to our team. We did that in June, which was well before the August surge and then before the January surge, which was even bigger than the August surge. And so I think knowing what our nurses did this year, we definitely wanted to recognize that.
Very good. I'm glad that we can.
Yes.
All right. We've had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Approval of one-time bonus?
Yes, sir. As we know, the 2021-22 school year has been a challenging year for all of our MCS employees. In addition to the pandemic increasing the workloads of school system staff, we are seeing really unprecedented cost of living rates quickly rising in our area. We value all of our employees, and we are recommending the approval of a one-time bonus for employees of Murfreesboro City schools to help address the cost of living increases. You can see in your board packet the, how we would apply that bonus. But to summarize, it would be a $500 one-time bonus for full-time staff and a $250 one-time bonus for our part-time staff. What... This is an unexpected expense, and this was not something we budgeted for. And that's why we're bringing the amendment. And this was one of those situations where we felt like it would be something that we want to respond to the moment of where we end. But I also want to point out that what this is actually costing the district. So you'll see budget amendments for a little over, I believe, $860,000 for us to move money from our ending fund balance to our labor codes to be able to provide this $500 bonus for our full-time staff. We did not have to move money from school nutrition and ESP. We were able to absorb that in those line items. So in total, with the amendment and the other funds that we're pulling from, thank you, you're looking at around about a $930,000 investment for us to do this. As you know, as a board, 88% of our budget is staff. And so anytime we make movement, it does cause a large movement in our budget as well.
So moved.
Second.
All right. That went quick. All right. Any question or comment?
Wish it could be more. Sorry.
Okay. Ms. Richardson?
Mr. Chairman, I believe Dr. Duke said it correctly. It's an investment. It's an investment in our teachers and our systems and to everybody that's part of this school and this family. So I'm very proud that we'll be able to move forward with this, and I hope that we'll get a unanimous vote.
Yes.
I think so. I'm glad we can. We've wanted to for a long time, and now I'm really glad for them and nurses and everybody involved because it has been tough. We all know it has. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then there is none. Thank you. Reports and information?
Yes, sir. The first report is coming from me tonight, and I wanted to take a moment. I know we had a great conversation with our legislative representatives, and there was a lot of conversation about the new funding model that's coming out. So I wanted to take a moment and just walk the board through the basic components of what's being proposed in the General Assembly right now and the impact it would have on Murfreesboro City. So I believe John's going to put a PowerPoint up on the screen, and it's there. So great. If you check out the TVs behind us, you can see this information. So as you know, currently, schools are funded through what's called the BEP. And we're moving to what's called the TESA or the Tennessee Investment Act. The difference, or the main difference from the two, is the methodology behind it. BEP is resource-based, which means they look at the number of students we have, and they say, because you have X number of students, you've earned funding for X number of teachers, X number of school nurses, this many psychologists, this many counselors, this much for custodial, and they resource it out based on those funds. Now, what we do know is, in our city and districts all across the state, it takes much more than what we receive from the state to work a school system. So they may give us a certain number of teachers, and we know we have to go above and beyond that with our local contributions as well. TESA is a student-based model, and so it works a little different there. And a student-based model, the premise is that the funding from the district receives is tied to what an individual student needs. And depending on what those needs are, it would generate a different amount of money that would come to the state. So it's not about resources. It's about who are you serving? And based on this plan, how much money does that student then generate? So to kind of talk about complexity a little bit, there are currently 47 different components of the BEP, and there are four categories in TESA. So it's simplified when I think about the understanding piece of it. I will say, and this is really important, this is a funding formula. It's not a spending plan. So in BEP, even though they say you earned money for X number of school counselors, we didn't necessarily have to do that. Now, in our case, we always exceeded those amounts, but it's the same here. They will give us the funding, but they're not telling us this is what you have to spend it on. That remains the board's decision through the budget process. And so those four categories, very quickly to go through, is the base. And the base is what every child in the state would get, and it covers the essentials for a K-12 education according to the state. On top of that, students may generate additional weights based on unique learning needs. So if they're an English-language learner, they would receive additional funding. If they're special education, they may receive additional funding. If they are economically disadvantaged or come from an area of high poverty, they may receive additional funding. On top of that, there is what's called direct funding, and that would be money the state gives for a very specific reason. So in our case, we'll talk about it. It's really third-grade reading scores. And they're giving us some additional money to make sure we invest in K-3 literacy and additional funds for students who are not proficient there. And then finally, outcome funding. And this is really an incentive-based model that if the district meets certain benchmarks, we would then receive additional funding as well. So to kind of break it down, again, if you think about the base, you can look at that, and again, that's what every student in the state receives. Under the current proposed legislation, each student would receive $6,860 for their education. That includes, and I'm going to continue to say according to the state because I want to be very transparent, these slides came from the state presentation, cover everything that is currently in the BEP. So that is the base, with the exception of some of the unique learning needs which have been pulled out for weights. So you can look at every student generating about $6,860.
Can I interrupt with a question?
Yes, sir.
What is the current that we're receiving through the BEP?
So it's not the current. And this is a difference, because currently, it's not broken down by student. It's broken down by, we earned X number of teachers. Here's the average salary, and they give it that way. So it's that resource-based.
But we have a, somewhere, we've got a number that we think it is, right?
Yes, we do. And it's around... Mr. Marlin, can you help me out here? I'll have to pull that. I haven't looked at it. It's around the seven mark, but...
We say it assumes, or $7,940, I think is the amount. It's around that amount. But that includes a lot of other factors.
And so this is the base. And then as you see, as we go through this, we're going to start layering some money on top of it as well, or some additional funding on top of it.
So will there be a difference then on what?
What we're getting and what they're...
Yeah. And I, this, none of us are in favor of, but it's maybe coming charter schools, okay? We give this student X number of dollars to go to the charter school. Is that going to be this amount, or is that going to be Joe, the seven?
So it would, it would be... So first of all, let me say, for that to happen, it would take legislative action, which hasn't happened as of yet. Okay? So similarly, right now, if a student withdrew from us and went to Middle Tennessee Christian, we would not get funding for that student specifically. So, but any, anything related to moving funds from the local to the charter would take legislative action and the General Assembly would have to do that.
So if they were to move now, it's not like we're having to pay Middle Tennessee Christian, it's.
We just do not receive that funding for that student.
Okay, okay, all right.
The second category is the weight. So you start with the base and then you start looking at those unique, unique learning needs. So again, this would be students with disabilities who may be receiving special education services, economically disadvantaged. There's actually some additional funds if a student is not just economically disadvantaged, but in a concentration of poverty. So the school as a whole has a very high percentage of free introduced lunch kids, they would generate some extra funds. Spar, sparse and small districts, which do not apply to us. And then gifted students, English learners, students with characteristics of dyslexia, students with multiple learning needs could actually receive multiple weights. So if they were both an English language learner and economically disadvantaged, they would receive the funding for both of those. As far as charter school facilities, there is in the weighting funding, the weighting, the weight funding, an allocation for charter schools at 4%. The state is telling us that that is already there, but it's not built into the BEP, so they're putting it in the TESA to make it more transparent is what we are hearing from the state. Now, I do know the General Assembly is having a lot of conversation about that right now. So after every student has received their base and their weight, then you can look at what's called that direct funding and then this is for specific programs. What impacts us here in Murfreesboro City? Here is this K-3 literacy piece and that is an additional $500 for every kindergarten through third grade student. So for us, in the proposal that they sent us that really projects what they think we're going to have in the next two years, it would earn us about an extra $2.8 million. The other piece is additional money for students who were not proficient in third grade to be able to get extra tutoring in fourth grade. And that would, based on projections of where we've been in the past, they're estimating about an additional $124,000 for that from Murfreesboro City. So you can begin to see the amount begins to come up. The last piece is the outcome funding. And again, this is about awarding for, it's an incentive-based model for reaching certain milestones. So for us, that would impact the second one, which awards per student outcome funding for students who are on grade level in reading at the end of third grade. If that student is economically disadvantaged and they're on grade level, they actually earn additional money. Based on the projections we've gotten, and again, with COVID taken into account, they're looking at that could earn us an additional $712,000 projected out. Now, as our reading scores continue to increase, that funding would then increase. So here's a really great breakdown to kind of look at this.
Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir.
Before we get too far past that. I'm trying to understand, can we go back to the last slide? Okay, the $712,000 that is an outcome-based funding. Is that like a bonus program? I mean, is that like, we're going to get, if we have students that perform at a higher level, we get more money?
Yes, sir. It's incentive-based.
Okay, so I guess the root of that is that we are, that gives us an incentive to reach all the goals and exceed the goals for our performance.
Or at least reach the goals because it's on grade level. Not that we don't want to exceed it.
I'll leave it at exceed.
Yes.
Anyway, so I just wanted to get that clear in my head. So this is actually a, a bit of a bonus for exceeding or meeting the expectations.
Yes, that's how, that is how the state has laid it out. You'll see there's three ways there, this district can earn those bonuses. One is for college and career readiness at the high school level. Another is for ACT and the third one is third grade reading. So the only one we're eligible for by the population who we serve would be third grade reading.
Thank you.
So this spreadsheet kind of gives you a great example of how students may generate funds. So if you look at the first student labeled as student one, you can see they would generate the base of $6,860. This student example has a unique learning need, which based on the learning they have, it generates an extra 20% on the base. They're also a K-3 student, so they receive $500 for that. So the district would receive $8,732 in funding for that student. If you look at the student number two, you can see this is a student with a lot more needs. And as the district would want to respond to those needs, he would generate more funding. You have the base, this child is getting additional funding because they fall in the category of economically disadvantaged and concentration of poverty, which most likely means they're in a Title I school or a high free introduced lunch school. This student shows being in a sparse and small district. This child has two unique learning needs, so you can see he's generating funding twice for that. And he generates funding for fourth grade tutoring because it means the year before he was not, or he was in the lowest level of achievement on Ten Ready. So that student would receive funding, the district would receive funding for that student in the range of $15,592. So again, you can see based on who we serve in our schools would then generate the amount of funds that the child receives, or the district receives to serve that child. Let me change that language. Also in this plan, there are two things that will impact us in Murfreesboro City most likely for sure. First is a fast-growing stipend. In a current, any district in their current year that had growth above 2% from the previous year would actually receive funds for those students that year. So right now, we are generating funds. So our numbers this year will determine funding for next year. Next year, if we grow above 2%, under this formula, we would actually get additional money that year to help with that growth. Now, that's not new. That's actually in the, with the BEP as well. So that would carry over. What is new is that any district that had that 2% growth for three consecutive years would be eligible for additional money for infrastructure. Now, I'm going to be very clear in the way that that's worded and it's that the districts may be eligible for additional funding. So I read that as kind of if there's money there, that would be it. But I know many of our legislators pushed for fast-growing districts in the infrastructure needs we have.
This is infrastructure, right? Not. Yeah, capital, right. Not capital improvement, now the whole building. Infrastructure. I want to make sure because I'm getting excited. When I read that, I said, oh, this is really good, but then I backtrack because I know it's the state, so.
Well, I, I, I'm yet to know how much that actually is going to be, right? So I don't anticipate it to be enough to fund a building versus us using that money toward building programs.
Okay.
I'm interested in how this is going to impact the hiring of teachers. Because what I see is that the extra amounts that we're going to get for ELL, students with disabilities gifted, that's going to determine, I know we always add money to what we spend for hiring, I get that, but still, that would determine, I suppose, the number of teachers we were eligible for in those programs.
So they're telling us right now that ratios will not change. So our current class size ratios will not change, our ESL ratios will not change, that will all stay the same. What we are being told is that it is truly just how we're generating dollars versus resources to, you know, the needs of this student and is the state responding to the needs of that student. So I don't know necessarily if it would, if it would impact hiring because, and we've asked that question a lot because the BEP very clearly generates at the state level of funding, one position for every 20 students. Now, what we know is students don't come in nice packages of 20, right? And so that's where we as a local have to step up and say, we need more teachers in this building. But that, and that's been a real mind shift for a lot of us as directors, think it's not about 1 to 20. That's not going to go away. 1 to 25 isn't going to go away. The money's going to come in differently. So this last slide really shows the, kind of an overview of some three main points I want to hit. The first is what are we projected? And I want to be very clear, this is a projection that we've received. So based on the state's projection, we're looking at an approximate increase of about $9.2 million if this new law was to pass for Murfreesboro City. So that's very exciting. When I think about, this would come not next year, but the year after as we begin to wrap up ESER to have a surplus of additional dollars. Now, what the state has done to project this out is looked at our historical growth and they've taken growth into account, taking out the COVID year and knowing that this is what we're seeing. And most districts are expecting, are projected to see an increase based on the state's projections. As we know, with the state, there's the state money and the local contribution. Under this plan, no, there will be no required increase to the local contribution for four years. And that's part of the bill, so right now, and not to get too technical, there's about a 70/30 split with state funding that if, you know, when you look at the funding, 70% comes from the state, 30% comes from the local. They put this in here to say, we're putting an influx of money into this and so for four years, locals would not be impacted, we're going to hold them harmless. Now, of course, as directors, we begin asking questions. What about year five? What about year six, right? They gave us projections all the way out to FY 30 and when you project all the way out to FY 30, based on our projections, it is, we're looking at no need for a local increase. And that is partly because in our district, with our county taxes and with our city contribution, they are already, are giving more or the state, the property tax and the sales tax in the county is generating more than that local requirement already. So there won't be, one of the big concerns for districts is, are we going to have to have a tax increase? And that question actually came up at our representative meeting because we're getting additional money. For MCS, based on the projections from the state, that is not the case. That is not the case for MCS. So when I look at this plan, I say there's a lot we still have to learn about and it's going through quickly. I will say, I am very cautiously optimistic. I really am. When you look at the additional funding, do we have concerns regarding some of the corresponding legislation regarding charter schools that may be going through? Yeah, there are definitely some concerns with corresponding legislation. But in looking for funding and me being able to ask the question, is this good for Murfreesboro City? Right now, I'm very optimistic and we're, I'll be at a meeting the next two days where this is going to be a hot topic of discussion with superintendents from across the state and digging into this more. But on, on face value, we're, we're very optimistic about it.
Weren't there some systems initially, maybe two or three weeks ago, that indicated or was skeptical that they, it was going to cost them locally more money for this in order to get this and this doesn't go into effect until 2023 or 24?
23, 24 school year, so not next year, but the next year if passed. Yes, there are. And when you think about that, a lot of that determines, determines on how those districts are funded, especially more rural populations that don't have the tax base that we have here in Rutherford, in Rutherford County and in Murfreesboro City. So our tax base, we generate a higher number and so we are, many districts, the local requirement, that is all that their tax base can generate. And so when you look at including more money and that requirement goes up, that local has to determine that. Our tax base is higher than that. You know, again, I've joked about the Costco, we're very thankful for Costco and, and the great businesses we have here in Rutherford County that help generate that funds. And so again, looking at projections, I want to be very clear and because these are all based on projections, but looking at projections, I look at a local requirement up to FY 30 that we are already exceeding.
That's good, that's positive.
I'm kind of with you, Dr. Duke. I'm cautiously optimistic. I guess it's hard not to wait for the other shoe to fall. I hate to say that, but it's, it's fallen so many times before, so it sounds great. Yeah, this is the funding we've kind of been wanting and asking for. I'm just, we'll wait, it's, it's, it sounds almost too good to be true, but I hope it is. I mean, I hope it works out.
And, and I guess my question was, well, I'm with Roseanne, I'm waiting on another shoe to drop because I know BEP is not funded 100%, so I'm, that was, I was going to ask that, but from what you're saying is that this is the dollar amount that we will get per student according to the four-block pyramid that we've seen. So I'm cautious, cautiously optimistic as well. I mean, it's, it's a very common sense approach, it seems to me. And I'm also grateful that, that locally we generate enough tax that we don't have to worry about an increase or anything like that. And I, I know that probably makes Bill a little happy too. I saw him, you know, kind of, I saw that Bill expression, it says, yeah, I like this a little bit.
I would like to point out with the BEP and I think, you know, and we have talked about the BEP not being sufficient for education for a very long time. And I think really when we think about it not being fully funded, what we're really saying is they put the money there, the formula isn't adequate to meet the needs of the school. So we have, Sarah's back there, I think, 16 school nurses, is that correct, Sarah? We have 16. Under the BEP, we generate funds for three and a half. Right? So we have, even, so we have with our schools and our district and having a nursing center as well, it's, they fund those three and a half, but it's not sufficient for what we.
For.
And we generate, I think, two or three assistant principals. We put one in every building because it's critically important with the work that they do. And so that really is what I think about with the BEP, it's not ever being resourced out enough to meet the needs of our district. Now, under this model, I still anticipate, you know, we're going to do more than just that basic that the state says, which we always have. The difference is, right now, I can tell you, we generate or we pay for X number of teachers above what we're funded. We won't be able to do that because the state's not going to tell us, this is how many teachers you fund. This is the students you're serving and these are the funds to meet the students' needs.
And the, and, and you did hit on the fact that the, the ratio does not, are not changing. So we're still going to need X amount of teachers to X amount of students, so many nurses per student population, et cetera. So none of that changes.
Yes, that's what we're being told and again, we are, we're keeping that anyway. As a local, we have decided we need a nurse in every building, so we're putting the funding for that.
I wonder in, in, in this, and you're talking about nurses. And there are, I think the bill is still before the legislature.
Yeah.
To change the ratio of school nurses from, what is it now, 1 to 750? Down to 1 to 300?
It's currently 1 per 3,000.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So that bill would only be needed if we stay with the BEP.
Okay.
Oh.
Because again, under this formula, it's not about resources, it's not about individual positions. It's about the children that you serve. And what, now what the state has said is that they have met that amount in the base. And again, like I said, I have a meeting the next two days, the commissioner will be there, the governor will be there. We're excited to hear more about this and really dig into it more. It will be our first chance for all the superintendents of the state to be together and really dive into this proposed. I do know there's amendments that have already been put forward on this and I do think more amendments will come. So.
Of course.
Still a lot of changes that could happen.
So what they've met in the base, I'm sorry to beat this dead horse, but it's got one more giddy up in it. So what they've met in the base is what's currently funded in the BEP for nurses, correct?
According to the state, and I'm going to keep saying, according to the state.
Yeah.
According to the state, everything that's in the BEP is funded in the base.
Okay.
That, that's part of this calculation, how much a kid costs.
That, right, the amount that's currently going to the BEP has been put in the base with the exception of funding for English language learners, special education students because that's been pulled out and put in the weights.
So it's still chicken noodle soup, but it's really just chicken with noodles. I get it.
I guess a question for anyone in here. I know this was, the governor was adding money to the overall education budget.
That's correct.
I can't remember what that number is. But does this, and maybe you can pick this up in your meetings and with the superintendents, is this something that is going to elevate the state from the floor of like 48th in spending to where we rise to at least a midpoint of, in the 50 states where we're spending on, on students?
And that's a question we've been asking. We know that he's investing about a billion dollars under this plan that would go into this funding model and the commissioner's been very forward with us from the very beginning. Most states have switched to a student-based formula and she has been very clear, it's very hard to switch to a student-based formula without having that influx of additional funds. And so they're saying a billion dollars is going into this to help fund this. The governor said that in his State of the State address. Obviously, that shows right now it's projecting out to be about additional $9 million for us in Murfreesboro City.
You know, we mentioned, somebody mentioned legis, you mentioned legislation for nurses and, you know, there's another, something going on, legislation going on about nurse pay and how, you know, we don't, teachers have steps in their salaries and nurses really don't. And I mean, I think that's something that, I don't know that we can afford to do that as a system if we don't get money for it through this formula, but that would be really.
That's true.
A good way to retain our nurses. If we could give them step raises, you know, step increases.
They are professionals. That's, that's so true. I'd, I'd never thought about that.
It would be, it would be nice for the state to come out and say, yes, that's what we're going to do.
That would be nice.
I said.
But didn't the TSBA actually say they opposed that?
I don't know.
Am I incorrect on?
I remember seeing that bill. I don't, I don't know what the position was.
I read that they were in opposition of it and maybe it's not as you. Maybe it's not, as you said, maybe it's a different formula, but.
Maybe they thought it was like, would be an unfunded mandate or something where you, that would put that responsibility on districts, but if there's not funding tied to it, then you've just required districts to pay more than they may have.
Just, you know, how they highlight what they recommend and oppose. And I believe this was one that was opposed, that was the one you're speaking of.
I bet you're right.
It could be.
Thank you, sir. That was a very, very good explanation, well done. And all we can do now is just hope that things go the way we need them to go. And who knows what the legislature will do as we have seen in the past. And I think we recognize that with the, the meeting we had with them as well.
Our next meeting, of course, is a budget work session, so I'm very hopeful I'll have some more clarity around this for that as well.
All right. Thank you, sir, very much. All right, board of extinction, uh, board members, you have your self evaluation that you will need to do. And if you can have those done and bring them back to the, our next board meeting and we can give them to Lisa and then she can take care and get them all mailed in and sent out.
We just give her the sheet, though. We don't give her the whole evaluation, right? I thought we retained the evaluation for our own records and gave you the sheet. I faxed the sheet already because I did it, so I got it in the mail. I assumed we all did. No? I wonder why I got one in the mail? Okay, never mind.
Oh, so, so all we have to, to give you is this top page?
I've always gotten the whole entire thing. Really? Oh, I can do that. I mean, it doesn't matter. Yeah. I send in that, that one sheet, just showing that you bought.
That you've done it. Yeah. You don't need to know what we did.
I mean, I, I usually get it all back from you just.
And then you read through and see what we thought about ourselves. That's okay.
I mean, whether you want.
But really, all you need is the top sheet. So we really, well, okay. All right, thank you. I understand. Okay, personnel report?
Yes, sir. Your personnel report's been provided for you in the packet and we're happy to answer any questions you may have regarding that.
All right. Any questions on the personnel report? All right. Enrollment report?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
The enrollment report with you, and we'll start with enrollment. If you look at the enrollment sheet, the, pay attention to the row in green, which gives us our totals. Our total enrollment for the sixth period, which ends, which ended on the 3rd of March, was 9,474. And if you look to the box to the right, it talks about growth over the course of the year, that's 474 students added this year so far. Below that, you'll see our average attendance during this time period was 94%. And I will draw your attention to the two rows at the bottom that talk about BEP funded and non-BEP funded. In light of what Dr. Duke was mentioning in, in that TESA report, this shows you the number of students that aren't funded by BEP. And we know that, you'll notice here, those are our VPK students, our preschool students that are in the volunteer pre-K, our special ed pre-K students. And then, of course, those students that are our preschool peers in that integrated preschool program, of course, are not funded and at those, but they actually do, you know, pay some money in to, you know, to, for their space in that program. So, but they serve as our typical peers in that program. So that gives you an idea of the number of students that, difference that would be funded under, under a different model. I think that's helpful for us to see at this time. I'll draw your attention to the PTR form for this time period, period six. Across at the bottom, you'll see the totals and you'll see by grade level, totals for grades kindergarten through three, the PTR is 1,000, excuse me, 18.8, not 1,000 per teacher, but 18.8 students per teacher. Fourth through sixth grade is 20.72, so 20.7 students per teacher. And district total is 19.46. So that's all within the range that we're looking for at this time. And then if we'll go to the truancy report for this time period, that number increased during period six to 305. But I did take a look at that at last year, at the same time period. It was 331 last year, so actually it's a little bit better than it has been in the past. I was concerned about those numbers. I did see a, an increase during this, this last time period, but it's still within the range of what, where we were last year. And then finally, the report for the chronic absenteeism. And that number finally has started its decline down. That's where we wanted it to go. We know that COVID has had an impact on that number that we watch. But for this time period, for period six, that's 1,253 students that have missed 10% or more. That concludes our report for today. Unless there's some questions.
Do you, I'm sure you have figured this, you've thought about it, particularly after what Dr. Duke's report on this new formula. What percentage growth is that?
This year, I did, I just figured it a few minutes ago because I thought you might ask that. It's 5.2% growth, yeah.
We average right around 2.6. So last year, we had a pretty big increase because of COVID and people that chose to stay home during COVID. But on average, we're about 2.6.
Yeah, so that's higher because that, that ending number was lower, so.
So with, with this new formula, we're in the money.
Got to, going to get a bonus. Hopefully, hopefully.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Martin?
No, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Revenue and expenditure report?
Oh, there you are, Kim. I didn't see you.
Kitty, kitty. Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Shacklet, good to see you. And before you, tonight, we have our financial information that goes through the end of February. And our total revenues for this time period, year to date, exceed our total expenditures. And I will also bring to your attention on the revenue side, again, our property taxes and our local option sales tax, again, continue to come in very, very robustly. Revenues and expenditures, we, we continue to monitor these compared to actual, compared to budget and make any necessary amendments and adjustments. We're getting close to the end of the year, so we will start seeing some more amendments and adjustments coming through. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on financial report? Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Duke, update?
Yes, sir. Just a few updates for tonight. As you, we talked a lot about the ELC grant tonight. As you know, that you approved as a board earlier when we approved that grant to do some work to the clinics at overall Crete Discovery and Mitchell Nielsen Primary, which needed some work in those nursing clinics. That's one of the few re-things we can use those funds for. Those actually came in a little under budget and we are now going to be able to address the Mitchell Nielsen Elementary Nursing Clinic as well to make that entire office space a little builder, bigger, give them a bigger clinic. And if you've been in Mitchell Nielsen lately, you know Dr. Shields, the principal, her office is not actually in the front office, it's actually in the hallway. This will allow her to move back to the front office as well and give the nurse a beggar, a bigger clinic and better restroom facility. So we're excited about that. We also wanted to officially announce that Andrea Blackburn, I sent this in an email, but I wanted to say it publicly, sixth grade teacher at Scales, has been recognized by Open Up Resources as their February National Teacher of the Month. Open Up is the curriculum company who publishes our reading curriculum. We are so proud of her. And I think tonight, what you've heard is we have presidential nominees, finalists, presidential award finalists, National Teachers of the Month for our reading. A lot of great things and a lot of teachers being recognized in Murfreesboro City. Believe it or not, 10 ready testing is right around the corner. So our students will begin testing on April 19th, which is a little less than a month away. There'll be a two week testing period, but that will actually be concluding before our next official board meeting in this chamber. And then I also wanted to point out that, as you recall, the Tennessee General Assembly passed a new zoning and zone waiver process going into effect for next year. And we talked about this a little bit during the, when we rezoned schools, that states that we have to publish the number of open seats we have at open zone schools, accept waivers, and then actually hold a lottery for those seats. So that process, actually, the public notifications part started this week. So parents can go on our website, see the schools that the board has set our open zone. We have posted an approximate number of seats that we think we could take zone waivers in those schools. If the applications that come in exceed that number, we'll have to select via a lottery system, and that is the new state law. So that information is on our website now. It officially opens March 1st so that we can be finished by the beginning of May, so we can get principals their projections as well. Finally, I had to say a, one more piece of good news, and I wanted to share this with the board. I know the, earlier today, in the ELC grant revision, the board approved money for us to buy the equipment for every school to do the health screenings. And Darla Sampson, our coordinator, school health coordinator, her and Autumn do an excellent job going to schools and checking up on our students. And so, you know, again, we don't always hear the positive, but I, I wanted to read this. I got this email from Darla that was sent to, from a parent, and she said, I want you to know about my daughter's appointment. Through our screening, we caught that the daughter had significant hearing loss in one of her ears. And when they took her to the doctor, Darla Sampson sent the letter home saying, hey, we flagged this as a potential hearing loss. It turns out that she has severe hearing loss in one ear and minor hearing loss in the second ear. Her adenoids were so large, they were actually pressing up against some of her eustachian tubes. And this is what I thought was great. She said, this is something that would not have been noticed during her yearly checkup. So she's actually going to be having some procedures done this summer to correct that. But once again, I like to point out, we do a lot more than just educate kids in this district. And I think it's important that our families know that, that our community knows that. We have obviously teachers who are being recognized all across the country for excellent work. And we got a lot of great things happening, even down to just taking care of our kids' health. So I thought that would be a great thing to end with tonight on some good news.
Wonderful.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything to come before this board, any other business or transactions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, have a second.